All right, we'll call to order this special meeting of the City Council Monday, Monday, May, excuse me, Monday, December 13th, 2021 at 4:30 PM. Madam Secretary, any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
All right, and this council meeting is going to be an executive session meeting. So just by way of, I guess, housekeeping, we'll go into exec session. We've got quite a few items here. What we don't get to in this meeting, we will suspend this meeting, finish the 6:30 meeting, and then go back to clean up anything if we need to get back in there, and then finish that meeting at that time. So moving forward in our agenda, executive session under Texas Government Code, Darren, do I have to read each one of those?
Yeah.
So we will be discussing Section 551.074 Personnel Matters, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters regarding our boards and commissions, Sections 551.087 Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.071 Consultation with City Attorney, and Section 551.072 Deliberations Regarding Real Property. With that, we will recess into executive session at 4:32. All right.
After our executive session at 6:28 PM. And at this time, we are going to recess the special meeting and that agenda until after our regular meeting, which starts here in a couple of minutes. We will stand in recess at 6:28. We will call to order this city council regular meeting for Monday, December 13, 2021 at 6:34 PM. I will lead us in an invocation, and our pledges will be led by Councilmember Little. So if you would, please stand. Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just would like to stop and take a few moments to ask you to come and be a part of our proceedings tonight. Father, we invite you in and ask you to lead us and guide us and direct us. Father, also continue to protect us as we enter into our holiday time of the year that we can stop and reflect and, in our own special way, celebrate you, celebrate our relationship with you, and just be with our family and celebrate together. Father, as always, we ask you to continue to protect those who protect us. Father, our first responders, who are always out and about, and sometimes, Father, comes into harm's way. We just ask, Father, that you protect them, guide them tonight, whether that is a first responder right here in Pearland, or certainly the men and women in our military across this world and across our country. Father, we ask you again to be a part of our proceedings tonight. Give us your wisdom, and may everything that we do give you glory. In Jesus' name we pray. All right. Thank you for that. And as we proceed on, welcome to your City Hall. This will be our last official meeting for the year. As we count down the days to end 2021, my right leg can't wait. It's been one of those years with it, so 2022 hopefully will be better for me in that regard. But we thank you for all coming out tonight and do wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we turn the corner on '21, and let's have a great '22. Moving forward, roll call and certification of quorum. We'll certify, we do have a quorum, and all members of council are present. Next, we have citizens' comments. I believe we have several. Mayor Protim Hernandez will be calling those out. We have certain people who just have general comments that we'll take now. Other people may have a specific item in the agenda, and we will call you out to make those comments when we get to that specific agenda item.
And, Mayor, we do have 10 total comments. Six of them are general comments, and then we have four for specific items this evening. Our first speaker is Tammy Dexter. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the purpose of the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be a timer provided for your convenience. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Good evening. I believe I have five minutes as an organization.
Yes, ma'am. You can do five minutes. You can do five minutes.
It shouldn't take that long. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Tammy Dexter of 1412 North Pine Orchard Drive here in Pearland. I'm also president of Pet Hub Animal Rescue, a 501(c)(3) organization established here in Pearland for over 10 years. I'm coming here tonight to speak about the unnecessary actions that are being taken against local rescues and the impact on residents' furry family members. I also come today, as I have in the past, to work with the city to reduce the stray and neglected cats by promoting and educating the public about trap, neuter, and release, T and R, the benefits of spay and neutering, and to rescue homeless animals until safe and caring permanent homes are found for them. This is the mission of Pet Hub. Pet Hub has strong ties and working relationship with council over the years, considering the founding members included Mayor Tom Reed and council member Scott Sherman. I am very concerned about the current practices that are occurring at Pearland Animal Control. In my neighborhood alone, Pine Hollow, cats are being trapped by animal control. When a rescue such as Pet Hub or other rescues attempt to pull one of these furry family members from animal control, all rescues are being denied. Rescues are being told from city representatives that no cat from that subdivision, Pine Hollow, is being taken out alive. Further, the rescues are being told that these cats would all be released back into the subdivision. The only outcome for these cats is euthanasia. This is a very disappointing stance by city representatives at Pearland Animal Control that murdering helpless animals is the solution when rescues are willing to take these animals and rehome them? Why is our city willing to murder so many animals when alternatives exist for them? Believe it or not, rescues, including Pet Hub, rehome these furry family members not only within the city limits but also outside. Finally, claims including false claims are being made against Pet Hub by city representatives. When these city representatives are asked who is behind these comments, no information is being given. For transparency, the city should provide who and when these accusations are being made so that the root issues can be resolved in a respectful manner. The city's extreme killing measures in response to these false claims increases the chances of bigger mistakes being made in animal control. The city may have a repeat of public relations nightmare of just over a year ago where Pearland Animal Control unnecessarily euthanized a family cat that was visiting the area that was mistakenly identified as feral. Again, Pet Hub and myself are here to serve the community as we have for so many years. Let's open an honest and transparent dialogue so that the unnecessary killing of innocent animals can stop today. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tammy, for joining us this evening. We appreciate those comments. Mayor, next we have Robert Lister. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We appreciate you being with us this evening.
Robert Lister, I've never been up here before, but what I just want...
Or please state your address.
2103 Kill Kenny.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody on the city council that's a civil engineer? I think there is. Yes, no. Anyway, I'm coming here tonight to ask about the Pearland Parkway turnaround. I built stuff all over this country or whatever. It makes no sense. There's never been wrecks over there or anything. I've been going up and down that street forever. And why on earth I do not... Can somebody explain to me what is going over there and who paid for this? Who set it up? What contractor, whatever? Because I'm going to look into it. Look, I've worked everywhere in the country. That makes no sense whatsoever. It's got to be a stop sign. Me, it's going to cause more traffic problems, whatever, unless somebody can explain to me exactly what's going on there. Because I don't get it. I stopped a couple of times to try to ask somebody. They said, "Well, you can't see the prints." I said, "I can read the prints upside down or backwards." I've built LA, New York, everywhere. That didn't make sense and I don't know who approved that, but somebody's got to explain how that's going to work. If they can, I'm all for it and it keeps the traffic flowing, but right now, I don't see that happening. I'm not stupid. I'm a... Well, maybe I am. But, never been here before and I will become back here because somebody's got to explain who spent the money up there and approved this. And I don't get it. Somebody explain to me. Has anybody in this room ever seen any wrecks over there in 20 something years or 30 something years? I don't think so. Look, call the police department, call whatever you want to do. The records don't show it. Well, somebody needs to come up and tell me how that's going to work. That's all I want to say. Whatever, but it just does not make sense. Explain to me and I'm... I will understand it if you can explain how to make it better. What I see right now, somebody, contractor, whatever, has talked somebody into doing something stupid. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lister, thank you for coming down tonight. I'm going to invite Robert. Would you step out and talk with Mr. Lister? He can give him all the information. Feel free to... Feel free to... He is. He's also our... Sir, we can't dialogue with you and we can't have this dialogue in the public because it's not on the agenda. You ask some questions and we're going to get you the right information so you can get that information. Okay? That's what we're going to do. Well, that's good. We love having our residents at city hall. So, Robert, would you step out with Mr. Lister and you can give him all the information? Feel free to put him in charge with the firm that actually designed it and everything else and they can have that dialogue. Thank you.
Mayor, next we have Richard Sharp. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Richard Sharp, 2516 Wood Creek Drive, Pearland, Texas, 7511. November 30th, 8:00 PM, 200 hours. This starts coming out of my faucet. Not the first time. Been going on for 20 years. Okay? I got lots of it. I was out of town, but my wife was here. I thought we'd get some samples. We sent one sample to the EPA. One went to a state lab. One went to SGS. SGS lab. We sent it to three different labs. I want to know what's going on because this is coming out of our water system. Clay? Everybody's proud of this water system. I paid for this. Any of you want to drink it? Look, I wasn't trying to be rude with you the other day on Facebook, but you know, I've been back and forth with this for a long time. Oh, just call them, they'll come out and flush the lines. Not helping. Still getting it. It's cycle 11. I've got PVC pipes. I don't have metal pipes in my house. This isn't coming from me. This is coming through some of those high dollar meters you guys bought. And I'm paying for this. Funny, huh, Clay? You think it's funny? So, I see on your agenda today, the earlier meeting was, you know, your performance goals. You need to do better, man. This is your show. I know you think it's funny. But when we get those analyses from those labs, it's not going to be funny anymore because you can't hide it going out, going out in the press. And it's not going to be funny anymore. I don't want any discourse, but this needs to get out. This needs to stop. You guys are chasing every penny you can from the rate there. You're raising the rates. You know, you're building this new water plant on the west side of town and we're getting this on the east side. Again, decade, decade. Y'all have had a long time to fix this problem. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Sharp. Appreciate those comments. Mayor, next we have Jimmy Davis. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes and we appreciate you being with us this evening.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsnoe Street, Pearland. I want to speak to you about our trash service. You know, October 1, we had a big change. We changed companies. We've gone to Toters for both trash and recycling. Toter service is great. I got notification about upcoming holiday. I'm cycle 12. I'm one of the lucky people that Saturday is my heavy trash and trash and recycling day. Saturdays are also when Christmas and New Year's all this year. So, as is standard policy, no service will happen that day. We have to carry all our trash over to Wednesday. For myself, there'll be no recycling for three weeks. I'll have recycling service on December 18th and my next recycling service will be January 8th. In the past, the trash service, okay, you know, my recycling bin is two thirds full every week, so I'm going to fill it up after a week. All my other recyclables, they're just going to have to go in the trash. In the past, not a big deal because you just set your bags out and waste manager would come by and they just pick up all the bags. You got 10 bags, 12 bags because you didn't get picked up on Saturday? Okay, no problem. They pick up all your trash. With our bins, we don't get to do that. We have to take seven days of waste that would be picked up in two services and they all have to fit in one bin. Now, if it doesn't or if the bin's overweight, they won't pick it up. They'll put a sticker on it. They'll say, "It's overweight. You need a second bin." What I think the city should do, you need to come up with something so that we can get rid of our trash so I'm not having to pile bags in my car and drive over to Centennial Park and throw them in your dumpsters because I'll do that if I got to. But ideally, maybe tell the residents, "Hey, give us free tags for our extra bags and have Frontier on Wednesday pick up the extra bags. Don't make me pay for trash that should be picked up as part of my monthly fee because I'm only getting half the trash service and I'm only getting a third of the recycling service that I pay for." So, I'm up with something to take care of cycle 12. It's, you know, eight, nine thousand customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We appreciate your input. Mayor, next we have Gail Bourgeois. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the purpose of the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you for joining us for the second week in a row. We really appreciate that.
Gail Bourgeois, 34... No, 3506 East Circle, Pearland, Texas. I'm here for two items today. First of them is, I live on East Circle Drive and there's a home directly behind me that's being built on a half acre lot behind me. So, I'm on a half acre, people behind me. So, they just sold it recently and the people over there are bringing in loads and loads and loads and loads of sand and dirt. What's happening is, as you're aware from my last week's meeting, we're having a lot of issues in our neighborhood with flooding. And so, I'm witnessing all this dirt being built up on these people's property and I'm a little concerned where it's going to land. I've been told by the city everything's going to be fine because they've got it all worked out, but I see a house that's as high as my back fence has been built up. So, if you see my back fence this tall, if you look where those people's property is, that's where their house is being built. And then beyond that, it goes down on the sides and down on the back, but I'm told somehow or another, that's going to end up on West Circle. I want to hope that that's the truth. I want to hope that that's what happens, but I want for somebody to look at this because if I'm already flooding in my backyard and my house is already surrounded by water and we're already complaining about it, many people in our neighborhood, this is just going to add fuel to the fire. So, I'm asking for somebody to look at this to see if we can get some of that to land towards West Circle where it needs to be and not to be filling up my property because as it stands right now, that's exactly how it looks. But I've been told that that's not the case, but I'd love to go walk the property with somebody and let them show me what I'm not seeing. Second thing is, our neighborhood, as you're aware, many people turned up last week, many of which spoke, many did not, but they were here on site this week. How many people are here from east-west circle area? So, about six of us or something like that. Anyhow, the reason I'm talking about this one again today is because, once again, we've had the city come out Friday and Monday since the last council meeting to dig out some of the ditches. A little bit of scoop on both sides of the property, on both sides of East Circle, that is. Now, what's happening is, I'm running out of time.
We'll give you an extension.
With the floodwaters and stuff, our problem is at 518. That's what I can't reiterate enough. So, I think that the city is looking at a bunch of stuff from what I'm understanding, but I can't express enough and many other neighbors are going to be coming in throughout these different council meetings to express the same thing. We're backing up on our properties and all the floodwaters are landing on our properties. The bottleneck is at 518 and that's where we want to concentrate our efforts. And as well, if we can't come up with some alternatives, I've been thinking about this. You guys have a library over here, you got a school. There's all different kind of properties that the city probably owns. If we can't get our water shed off of that, let's start thinking of some alternatives. Get the creek wider, get the creek deeper, go over there and drain some of that water to Long Hareage. You know, give us some alternatives because I can think... I'm not an engineer, but I can think of a whole lot of ways to skin the cat. And I just think it's, we're at the point where we need to start thinking about that and moving quickly because not all of it's going to take a bond and all that. And I'd also like to ask, what is the situation? Last week, we talked about this. Y'all, we're going to be putting this on your records and stuff, but are y'all considering, any of y'all, any bond referendums for all this? Or are we going to kind of work this issue and see what engineering comes up with to where we can move on and see what we come up with first? But keep in mind, I do appreciate the fact that y'all did some of the stuff, but we still, I don't think are on the same page with where the issue lies. So, we'll continue to come up here and talk about it and see if we can get some resolution. But thank you for what you have done as well.
Yeah. Robert, one of the things that I would request is maybe we set up, maybe even with Josh, communication opportunity here with the residents over here about what we are doing. Clearly, finding the problem may not take, you know, a day. It may take a bit to find it and know exactly what to do and then come up with a project to fix that. So, maybe a good opportunity to, whether it's a webpage landing or something that residents can be directed to as to how, what, and where we're looking at into this situation. Okay?
And I'll just, just to reiterate, as a public education, as the mayor stated earlier, we can't dialogue. So, I know sometimes people come in here and they hear comments and we don't respond directly, but we always try our best to respond after the fact, either through staff or directly. So, you know, we just wanted to set that expectation. If you do make comments, we are, you know, taking notes up here. We do hear your comments. But as the mayor said, we just, because it's not part of the agenda this evening, state law says we can't, you know, engage in a back and forth dialogue. So, we do appreciate everyone's understanding there. Mayor, we have one final comment for general comments this evening. It's Ivan Zuniga. If you could please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the record and you have three minutes there. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hi, good evening, council head major. My name is Ivan Zuniga, 3409 East Circle Drive. You know, first of all, thank you for, you know, listening to us last week and obviously doing a little bit of maintenance on our ditches recently. Like we explained, obviously, you know, that maintenance, you know, may help a little bit, but I think the issue is, you know, obviously slope elevation to the original, you know, drainage point, which is 518. It was interesting seeing last week on how you guys developed projects. So, I guess I might have more like questions than comments is, you know, I'm used to seeing, you know, projects being developed. Obviously, at this moment, there's no project on the agenda books for next years, but I guess my question is, first, I'm used to, have we set up a engineer assigned to a project that can, you know, oversee and look, you know, different proposed solutions on the issue, you know, to, after a project manager or an engineer is assigned to this area, somebody walking and with different contractors and what is could be the proposed solution? Obviously, once you identify different alternates, you know, what is the best plan that the city can approach this issue? Obviously, once it's been assigned and determined based on the cost of dollar value, you know, obviously get it in the book so that we can move forward. Thus, you know, I'm not a civil engineer by any means, but I'm an engineer with a P and a state license and a... and a state license in Texas. So, I know how we do things, you know, on my corporate side. So, I'm sure you guys follow kind of similar patterns to get things done and on the agenda. So, you know, I can offer any assistance or collaboration with your engineering department if needed to kinda get those, you know, moving in the right direction. Again, to kinda get those items on the agenda and the books to get approved and funded. But thank you for your, you know, participation and listening to our comments last week.
Yes, thank you for those comments. We said we can't dialogue, but you know, you being back here and offering follow-up is valuable to us. We really appreciate you doing that. Mayor, that's all we have for general comments, but our, our city secretary wanted me to just clarify real quickly. Mr. Brian Reagan, did you want to speak on a specific item or did you wanna speak for general comments? General comment? Okay, then please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And we thought this was for item number six, so my apologies.
Okay, my name is Brian Reagan. I reside at 3727 Abbey Wood Drive, Pearland, Texas. I'm a commissioner for the Emergency Service District Number Five. I'm here to report that Mr. Joel Hardy, project administrator for the City of Pearland, has worked very diligently with all of the board members of the ESD Number Five. I'm very pleased to announce that we have all unanimously, unanimously approved the contracts for fire protection, fire suppression, emergency and medical rescue services. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have.
We appreciate that. Mayor, that's all we have for general comments.
All right, thank you very much and thank you for those comments and those that we haven't gotten to, it's because you have a specific item on the agenda for, for your comments to be directed towards. So, with that, we're moving forward in our agenda, the consent agenda. I have not received any items to be removed. Is that correct? Seeing none moving in that direction, we'll move to Mr. Orlando. Would you place consent agenda on the table, items A through J?
Consideration and possible action, items A through J, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt consent items A through J.
All right, thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, new business, new business item number one placed in here for discussion, council discussion regarding the recommendations of the Short Term Rental Advisory Committee. Do we have residents to speak for that? Okay. Before we do that, I'll have, we'll have a resident come and speak and address council on that. If you'll recall, we set aside a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee to help look at the potential of putting together an ordinance around short-term rentals in our city. That committee consisted of Member Perez, Mayor Protim Hernandez, we have John Lamson, who I believe is here tonight, Manny Patel is here as well, and then myself. And so, the committee, again, oh, and Daryl Eisenberg, that's right, I didn't see Daryl, that's the reason why I didn't have his name written.
He's upstairs in a T and Z meeting right now.
T and Z meeting. And so, the group took it very, very quickly under advisement and, and took a look at what we would like to see, you know, potentially here in Pearland. One of the struggles is there's many different ordinances that are out there and many different things to take a look at. So, the committee kinda focused on a, on a handful of cities that have similar characteristics to Pearland. As you know, we don't have a big tourist attraction, you know, in town. That's mostly in Houston, like at NRG or, you know, those types of places. So, we didn't wanna compare ourselves to like an Arlington or even San Antonio and the Riverwalk and those types of things. So, we looked more at places like Capel in the Dallas area, McKinney, Frisco, even though Frisco does have the one ballpark, for the most part, the similarities of the community next to a big metropolitan city and, and more of a bedroom feel. What do we wanna see in our, in our, in our short-term rental ordinance? So, with that, set out to not write the ordinance, but come up with, are we wanting to look at certain pieces in the ordinance? What I'm gonna ask the council tonight is, as we go through and take a look at the items that the committee took a look at, if we can get, you know, concurrence on a big chunk of this, we know a hundred percent of this, you know, we're gonna have to probably arm wrestle on a handful of things, but if we get concurrence on a, on a big chunk of it, then Darren can have good direction to go and, and actually draft an ordinance, bring that back probably sometime in late January, if not early February from, from crafting it. And then my hope is if we're still struggling with a point or two, that we can kinda plug that in after we get the body of the, of the ordinance and hopefully wrap this thing up in, in February. It'd be nice if we could do that. So, that's kind of my hope tonight. So, with that, Mayor Protim, I think we have a few citizens to, to comment.
Yes, Mayor, we do. First, we've got Joseph Coza. If you could please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments to three minutes. And appreciate you being here with us this evening and your ongoing input on this item.
Address 2910 South Main. I'd like to say thank you, council and mayor, for putting this advisory committee together, especially Kevin Cole, Agent Hernandez, Trent Perez, Daryl Eisenberg, John Lamson and Manny Patel for the last five or six weeks that y'all spent every Tuesday, hour or so of your time coming up with this kinda framework for what y'all thought would work for an SDR ordinance here in Pearland. It, it is pretty comprehensive for an ordinance. It covers both the neighborhood and a person that would like to rent an SDR here in Pearland. As y'all are well aware of, on Verona Drive, we have one that has been out of control for eight to 10 years, maybe a little longer. Randy Bailey could nail down the date when it started, but it turned into a party house and event center. And I think this type of ordinance would help in getting some type of regulation and way to deal with these type of situations. It also would protect the people that are renting an SDR here in Pearland, that they're not renting some dilapidated building, which has happened before. So, I would like to say thank you very much for your time and effort. I look forward to y'all's discussion. I look forward to moving forward with, coming up with some type of regulation to bring this into compliance with the rest of the businesses here in Pearland as well as the hotel community as well. Again, thank you very much for your time and appreciate the effort that everybody put forward in, in coming up with this.
Thank you. Next, Mayor, we have John Lamson. Your name and address for the record. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, my name is John Lamson, 2114 Bertie Court in the Green Tea subdivision. I wanna follow up on what Joe said. Thank, thank Mayor Cole and the council for putting the committee together to begin with. I was fortunate to be asked by Mayor Cole to be a member of the Short Term Rental Advisory Committee. It recently concluded its work advising the mayor and council on STR regulatory options. The issue has been discussed by city council for quite some time and the report presented tonight contains recommendations that will have a positive impact on equitable regulations moving forward. I think everyone agrees that short-term rentals have a place in communities. I think it is also agreed that some type of regulation is needed to protect, to protect visitors to our area, local hotels, and most importantly, our neighborhoods and residents. I appreciate being asked to participate on the committee as a resident representative. I tried my best to provide meaningful input. I was impressed by the involvement of all members of the committee as we met over several weeks. The committee was diligent in developing recommendations to council that are fair, objective and balanced. Without question, we must provide a level playing field for our local business associates who have invested substantial time and money in local hotels. They deserve a fair competitive environment. We also have to address the valid concerns of neighbors who must ensure the safety of their families, their homes and their neighborhoods. And it is in the best interest of visitors utilizing local rental, rental opportunities to know that the lodging afforded to them is legitimate, safe and approved by our local government. Short-term rental operators will also know that they too have a level playing field as they offer their home to visitors. As a member of the committee, I urge council to consider these recommendations and provide the City of Pearland and its residents with a fair and workable regulatory ordinance regarding short-term rental operations.
Thank you very much for those comments and for your service on the committee as well. Finally, Mayor, we have Manny Patel. Please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record and appreciate you being here this evening.
Hello, guys. Manny Patel, 2806 Miller Ranch Road. I just wanted to, to thank, thank you guys for letting me be a part of the committee for the short-term rental recommendations that are gonna be seen here a little bit. And then just coming back from the hotel side, we're just trying to level out the playing field and I think we came up with a pretty good set of recommendations and I hope that everything is addressed or we'll work through it to get the agreement, I mean, ordinance in place. So, just to level out the playing field for hotels and STRs. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have, Mayor.
All right, thank you and, and thank to, thank you both gentlemen for your availability and participation in this group. Probably as we move forward, we may even call on both of you to add input as our discussion as we go through some of this, as to why, where and how and those types of things, we came up with some of these recommendations. So, so with that, Darren, do you wanna start off with kinda orienting, orienting us with the recommendations and moving forward?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, council members and of course, members of the public who are here this evening and specifically the individuals who gave you your time to serve on the committee. So, thank you again for your input. It is valuable. And so, here we are this evening and we get the opportunity to sort of sort through this and I'll just cut to the chase because I know that's, that's what we need to do to sort of figure out sort of some council direction here. With respect to the, the recommendations, you'll see them here on the screen and Josh, I don't know, can you, is, can it be expanded just a little bit for the public? There we go. All right. So, I'm gonna scroll down, yeah, section three here. The, the recommendations were really broken into three categories. You'll see the first one we're gonna talk about is permitting requirements. Then after that, we'll talk about safety and inspections. And then finally, the, the last thing were some specific regulations. There is another area we talked about, which is permit revocation and appeal, and that's more of a due process provision where the committee didn't go into it and talk a lot in depth on that. That was more because that's, that's an entitlement of a right to a person. When, for instance, if a permit is gonna be pulled, they need to have the right to, to have due process in that so that their concerns can be heard and a decision can be rendered and it can be appealed. So, so we're gonna focus on the, these first three items. So, I was gonna start with the permitting requirements. And again, as indicated earlier, these came from multiple jurisdictions, but you did find a lot of commonality and similarities between ordinances on what is required for a permit. And right now, we currently have an ordinance that's gonna require the registration. So, this would really be sort of consistent with that process, but it would require some additional information to be provided at the time of permitting. And so, I'm just gonna walk through the permitting and I thought if council's okay with this for those three items, let's talk permitting and then let's take a look back at that, get some feedback and, and then we'll move on to the next section on safety and inspections and we can get some feedback on that. If council desires to do it otherwise, feel free to, to please interject and, and direct me otherwise. But, so, let's taking a look here at the permit. We, I think there was an agreement with the committee that there clearly should be an annual permit obtained and it should be on an annual basis and not just a single permit upfront because it does give some chance for accountability and, and how that property is, is reacting into the market and with respect to the city's regulations. A permit, they felt like any, B for permit should cover the city's administrative costs so that this does not cost the city anything. A permit application, the types of things that would be required on a permit application. And I don't know why the formatting got, formatting got thrown off here. I'm looking it online and it's a little different. So, I apologize for any formatting here differences. But proof of homeownership, not, so the, the point here is that if you're going to come in and get a permit, it has to be the owner of the property. Nobody else can obtain a permit. Name, address, phone and email of the property owner. In addition to contact information for the operator, designated agent, the mortgagee and the, and a homeowners association if applicable. Also, a 24-hour emergency contact to respond to complaints and with the requirement that those complaints be at least responded to in some form within one hour. A trade name, if, if a trade name is involved because sometimes you'll have a property ownership could be in a different entity's name, but they are the owner of the home, but we need to know what trade names are as well. Zone classification with the property because the intent would be to only allow this, properties be rented in residential districts, excuse me, short-term rentals in residential districts. And then finally, a sketch or other floor, or, or floor plan, site plan showing bedroom, sleeping areas, evacuation routes, fire extinguishers and number of parked cars that can be accommodated in the driveway and garage. The, the purpose for the sketch or floor plans because as you'll see later in the regulations, there's some occupancy and parking limitations that are gonna be utilized or at least are recommended for utilization. And in order to do that, you sort of have to have a floor plan of the home to know how many bedrooms there are. The, for instance, to meet the fire code for a bedroom, you couldn't use a game room, which may only have three walls, may not even have windows, and so it wouldn't meet the definition of a bedroom. And so, you wanna make sure that certain rooms aren't converted into bedrooms to increase the capacity of a short-term rental beyond what was really the design under the codes at that time. So, again, these are the things that were requested be submit, submitted with a permit. Just, I, I have a section that says there are other. This is some information that was brought about by some committee members that were thinking, maybe we should at a minimum issue some caveats because, for instance, homeowner's insurance and possible mortgage restrictions. A lot of people don't realize this, but technically FHA, an FHA mortgage, I believe there are some covenants within those mortgages that may not allow it to be actually used as a short-term rental. And then also even some insurance limitations and a lot of times, a person who's running an SDR may assume that they have coverage when in reality they don't. And so, there are some caveats there. The city doesn't regulate insurance for businesses and things of that nature, but we felt like it would at least coming out of the committee to at least recommend that there be some disclosures when an application is obtained to request a permit, that they be aware of these things and give them something to think about. So, with that being said, again, this is the permit section. Wanted to go ahead and pass it back to council, get some feedback on that and then we can move on.
All right, so questions and comments on this section. Woody?
Yeah, I think that a lot of good things covered here and, you know, the other side of it is, I think that it should be the same things that are required by a hotel and, and there and the judgment on it. I think the number of vehicles to be located there to residents should be there and that should be limited. The other side too, if it's a pool there, it should be fenced with a lock gate as you would have in a, in a hotel area and then probably carrying some kind of liability insurance. But I think that the inspections by the fire marshal should be done at least quarterly period of time through there. So, but the other things, you know, I think is good, but I, I think anything that we require a hotel to have, it should be for this. I've got a concern anyway of having a business in a residential neighborhood and the one that the biggest concern is in our neighborhood over there. And I've been down there twice, three times, I guess, and saw what, part of it's what's going on and the cars parked from one end of the drive all the way around to the main road again, and it must have been 30 to 50 cars. And, you know, and something like that, the people are really concerned about that living there. And the ones I talked to, they say, "Hey, I don't want my grandkids to be out in the front yard when this is going on," you know, "in there and it's a lot of noise and..." front yard when this is going on, you know, in there and it's a lot of noise and everything else. So I just got a real concern about, you know, you come in and we do the planning and zoning and create a residential area and this is allowing a business to be in a residential area. So I think, you know, again, bottom line, it should be inspected by the city and it should have the same restrictions as anything that goes on like in a hotel or what have you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I I have a couple. And Darren, trying to respect that distinction, I think the lines for at least my some of my questions might be blurred a little bit, but um, I I guess the first thing is we've covered a couple of different issues. I think it makes sense to tease out those two different things that we've talked about. Kind of the first thing we talked about as this came up was around the collection of hot taxes, which we've already voted on and decided. And so those are going to be collected. I think that's going to come before us for a final kind of approval on making sure that that's being done in a in a fair way and everything in the final process for us to sign off on. But so we're going to be collecting the hot taxes. The second thing, which I I think more people were fired up about, certainly I was fired up about it, are nuisance properties. And what's already been mentioned here, what's well-known to everybody is a property on Verona, but it's not the only one and it won't be the last one most likely throughout our city of 130,000 people. And so I I think what a lot of the concerns came back to and what was really important to me is how can we give the city more tools to shut these down? Because I and I think this kind of dovetails a little bit with the the conversation that we're having on other zoning uses, like as it pertains to vape shops. I mean, we're singling out the Verona guy. I mean, there's a there's a vape shop that is is flagrantly violated rule after rule after rule and I am kind of getting frustrated that we know that and we can't necessarily do something about it as quickly as people would like. And that that was, you know, I think it might have been my first or second council meeting that a bunch of good people in Green Tea, including my godmother, came up here and said, hey, we've been dealing with this for forever and we hear you, we hear what you're saying, let's call, you know, and we've been calling the police, we've been calling the city, we've been talking to our council members and why can't anything done about this? And I, yeah, that's a great question. And so what my thing has always been is how can we get, how can we give ourselves the tools as a city to address these nuisance properties? And but I what I've wanted to do is be really kind of specific about those because at the same time, you have that guy who's a huge jerk, doesn't care about his neighbors and has been a born in their side for years. I think you also have other people that it's a grandma or it's two parents putting their kids through college that nobody even knows about because they're not being jerks, they're doing it the right way, they want to do things above board. And so how do we give ourselves the tools to hit that guy on Verona as hard as we possibly can without infringing on the ability of people who want to do it the right way, who want to be good neighbors? And so that's that's been my kind of weighing of that situation and there's certainly a balance there. So what I would say about this, I I think there's a lot of good stuff in this proposal both on the permitting and on the safety and inspection side. Some good things for sure, and I think we get down to this in the next one, but just being very explicit in a couple of different places about, you know, you cannot rent a house in Pearland to for a party. You cannot go and rent a house in somebody's neighborhood and use that as a party rental. That that's in a couple of places here. I think that directly addresses what we've been talking about here. Another one, you cannot go and rent a house for a period of less than 24 hours. I think the implications of that are pretty obvious and in a type of activity that we have a prerogative to not allow in our neighborhood. So I think there's a lot good there. I actually think that we we could probably go further. I would certainly be in favor of going further on some of these things. And I know this this goes to why this is so complicated. There's different state rules and requirements in place of of what you can and can't tell people to do in their own homes. And they have to have due process and it can't just be, oh, you know, we all know that we call the cops on this guy every other weekend, but there has to be some guardrails in place. I would like to see more there in terms of, you know, repeat offenders, let's just have a mechanism to shut them down. So and also, I guess what I would say, and maybe this is added on to this, or maybe it's a subsequent piece of a subsequent ordinance that we do, but in talking about this last couple of months, I've heard from other folks, one that really comes to mind and I asked about it, was over in Pine Hollow Estates, there's a house and I think everyone was provided the information up here that is similar to the one on Verona, that is is constantly getting calls, that has the police out there often, that is has become this party house, that there were shots fired there a few weeks back. It's not a short-term rental. The neighbor's just a jerk and owns the house and these people are feeling that same sense of desperation and of frustration that, hey, we keep calling the cops on this guy, we know this is a problem and nothing is being done about it. So I I want to hit that guy and I want to hit Verona guy in the same fashion. I don't know that necessarily the best way to do that, but I think we could see more here on that front. And I'd certainly be happy to, you know, if it doesn't logistically work, that we need to pass that separately. But I think everybody experiencing that, that's the main issue is neighbors that are having the parties, making their their neighbors and people in the community feel unsafe. That's really the core animating issue that we're supposed to address. So with all that, I'll also say I think there are other parts in here that I am less supportive of that seem to less directly address the inconveniencing of of neighbors in that way and which I think while well-intentioned, I think are just they go, they they don't have the same impact on making sure that neighborhoods are safe and clean and friendly in a way that I I can't support. And so, for example, a few of these, it's like, how many people can be in a given bedroom? Like, how many beds? I mean, that gets into all kinds of stuff about how big is the bedroom? Do we have a bunk bed? Do we have another bed? I don't want the government to be regulating that so much. I I think that's getting that's getting a little too in the weeds and we it's very dependent on the specific houses, specific property. Another one that I think just makes this extremely cumbersome, like the providing a detailed floor plan of the house, I think notifying the neighbors around. And then I think another thing that was discussed very explicitly up here was, you know, oh, hey, let's 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 pass this hot tax thing. We're not asking for a permit, we're asking for a registration, there's not a permit. And then it's like the the first opportunity, it says, we want to charge a permit fee. So that feels a little uncomfortable to me. I I think my overall feedback would be it just in terms of shifting this, and this is why I was saying, Darren, I think this is applicable both to the permitting and the safety and inspections. Let's focus on these direct nuisance items and addressing these problem properties, whether whether they're at short-term rentals, which we've certainly seen, or in these other instances with less of a focus to the these other items that have less of a direct impact on the nuisance. And I would say it really comes down to, we had a discussion last week where multiple members referenced property rights and we're actually discussing that same item again directly after this one. I I think this really boils down to property rights from both perspectives and that's, I buy a house, I have the right to not have some crazy party there and and people coming and renting that out as a venue and a space that was supposed to be a nice family neighborhood. Those people's property rights need to be respected. Simultaneously, if I want to run Airbnb and I'm paying my hot taxes and I'm doing everything the right way, I'm not having the crazy parties, I'm making sure people aren't parking and disrupting my neighbors and I'm doing that to help my kids get through college, I think we need to respect those property rights as well. And so do organizations like the Texas Association of Realtors, which most, if not all of us, probably filled out their candidate questionnaire when you're running for election and they think that it even a registry of Airbnbs is a violation of property rights, let alone some of these things about, you know, you need to furnish a diagram of of the house and whatever. And the last thing I would say just on this, I just have a and maybe it's because of my age and maybe that's a reason it's good to have different perspectives, I just have a little bit of a different perspectives on short-term rentals in terms of like, when I get into an Uber, I want that Uber to to be have some bare minimum level of of safety. But I am really glad that I have an Uber that I can call here in Pearland and that I don't have to go to a phone book and try to get on the phone with a cab and and get a cab to come out here. And I know when I'm making that choice that the cab is more thoroughly regulated and that that guy went through a lot more red tape and that there was all these processes in place, but I am willing because of the value and the convenience and and honestly just my my free market choice to to get in a in a Uber and sometimes they suck and the the window doesn't roll down and the AC doesn't work and but I I think that's an important option to have. And so kind of talking about, I I think there are some principles, for example, you know, they're required by state and city law to pay a hot tax. If we can do that in a fair way, absolutely, let's collect that hot tax and put that on even standard. But there are other instances where I'm like, okay, I don't think we need OSHA to go in and 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 look at everybody's house that is trying to make a couple of extra bucks that might just do this once or twice a year, might just do this for a special event like the Super Bowl. So that's kind of my final feedback, focus on the nuisance people, pop them harder. I'm willing to go as far as we can on this as the law would allow, Darren, towards popping those, but but kind of de-emphasizing some of the other issues that pertain less to quality of life for neighbors in the area.
Very good.
Mayor Camp Car?
I'm a little bit fact-finding and I'll relay my thoughts. City attorney, are we opening ourselves up to legal liability if we are permitting things and something untoward happens? And I'm trying to go into the worst-case scenario, somebody gets maimed, killed, or is it, do we have any liability because we've permitted this Airbnb and now if something happened at an Airbnb rental?
No, the city would have no liability. Just same reason we don't have liability in a hotel or any other business in Pearland if something happens.
I appreciate that. That takes care of my items. For the public's process, I have a lot of questions, but where I'm going is I would rather have a very narrowly focused ordinance that is strictly applied as opposed to a very wide-open ordinance that is loosely applied and we make it the gotcha at some point down the line. So just for the folks, I want to know, narrow focus, very strictly applied, I think is very different than than what else we could go. For the the comments around permitting for the the city attorney's benefit, I think we need to distinguish between an owner-operator as opposed to a corporate entity doing this. If they're doing this all across the country, for some folks who know some of these these office companies like we work, they literally rent space from a landlord and then they repurpose it. I'm not saying that's happening here or today, but you're thinking two and three and four years down the line, we don't want to revisit this. So I'd like to think that the owner-operator is going to be looked at and treated, at least on the permitting, on the fees, probably different than a national entity. So just one thing to memorialize. I think a time limit on the permit outstanding, if you permit on day one and submit, there needs to be a shot clock of when the city needs to get back. You could very easily see this as a way that we just never get back to you and you go away. So a shot clock would be, I think, appropriate. I think a limit on how many can be applied per year. If somebody goes and rents out an apartment, not apartment, a home and goes and rent out 20 homes and turns them into a mass situation, I could see how that could go wrong. So I think a limit on how many can be the same user requesting a permit application that they can't do more than 10 or 15 or 30 in a year. And I'm agnostic on that.
I didn't know where you were going with that and I I got it now.
So so same entity doesn't come and do it 40 times.
Right. I got it.
So that takes care of mine. I I think a not-to-exceed number on the fees needs to be set, going back to that that number of the owner-operator as opposed to the corporate group. And then the, I understand on item number G here, which if you want to scroll up, Darren, just a little bit, the floor plans. I have a lot of agitation on this because I don't know if the general public knows, but there are a lot of folks who not have it all up here. And you do not want public access to where you live, your kids live, what room they're in, where your wife is staying. Bad idea. Just telling you, bad idea. Don't want that out there. I am very happy with the number and somebody can go verify that in inspection, but it is not a good idea to have in a public domain with the with the layout of my houses. And I'm just telling you, that's for public feedback. I know the count, the the group may have a different perspective on that, but that's a public safety issue to me and that information in the public space is used to harass members of this council and other public servants. When it comes, it happens at your place and you're not prepared for it, it's not fun. So that's just my thought around permitting. So I'm going to give my time back to the the mayor.
Mayor Carbo?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the committee. I think it's good, it's a great start to Councilman Owen's points when Manny was on there. So that's why I was glad we had a a hotel operator on there so that we can kind of get their stamp and buy-in. And like any ordinance, I mean, we're going to put it out there, we're going to find some gotchas and Darren will be back saying, hey, we need to amend it to to fix this scenario that we never dreamed possible. And then in terms of the fee, I appreciate the not-to-exceed, but I think like our other, all our fees, we'll revisit those with the budget process on an annual basis. So, you know, this body will be in charge of setting that. But I'm, I I like it and I get the intent. I understand the balance that that Councilman Orlando is coming out and I think this is where it needs to be and I appreciate the committee working hard and fast.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things and appreciate all the hard work that went into this and I agree with most of the the suggestions. Ken, maybe you guys can give me a little logic behind what's the the reason for mortgage restrictions?
Well, I just on that, we're not, we're not putting mortgage restrictions. The caveats down here are there may be somebody with an FHA mortgage that doesn't, hasn't gone back and looked at the covenants of their mortgage and the next thing you know, they've got a Airbnb and short-term rental in their house and FHA finds out. And then they've got a problem with their mortgage company. We didn't want to get into where they have to show a mortgage or do anything like that. This is an information point that if somebody comes in and pulls a permit, oh, by the way, are you aware, you know, you might want to check your mortgage covenants, make sure you don't get, you know, deemed, oh, and by the way, you might want to check your insurance just to make sure you're in good shape.
Okay, so it's just an advisory thing when it comes to permitting?
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense. I guess, Darren, do we have, do we as a a city have the authority to impose tax filing requirements on these short-term rentals and what type of tax are we talking about? And who's going to be enforcing these? Who's going to be reviewing these tax returns?
So when you're referring to tax, they are required to comply with our hotel occupancy tax ordinance. And so they would be filing quarterly returns to the city, quarterly statements to the city to fulfill their payment of the hotel occupancy tax.
Which mirrors what the hotel owners are doing.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense. Now, as far as all these regulations, inspections, permitting, my concern there is have we given any thought to the additional manpower that's going to be required and what expense the city or the taxpayers will incur to enforce and, you know, compliance with the regulations?
That was a a topic of discussion and it really is going to be derived by what we ultimately decide here. For example, we've got council member that wants an inspection every quarter and then, you know, or are we going to do an annual inspection, you know, as a as a as a part of this? That's going to obviously determine cost. We, when we get to the next section, like the safety inspection and that part of it, we have, you know, members of our fire marshal's office that that came up with some of these and how that was derived. It started with our our fire marshal's office, for example, does an inspection every year on homes that are foster care homes, not just a home that might have, you know, a lot of kids in it, but even if you have one. And so that list was a lot more extensive extensive than A through M. It was even, it was even greater. So we, here's a a great place to start. We have a certain type of home, they go in and they do an annual inspection. We have somewhere around 95 homes a year that have this inspection. So it kind of gave us an idea to gauge what would it look like if we did an annual inspection and when we find out how many short-term rentals we have, that would help us come up with the very question that you're talking about, what about manpower? So then we asked the fire marshal's office, would you, would you take that list and then under, what do you think would be a good, you know, inspection list, you know, for these homes? They cut out quite a bit from, you know, what was on that other list to come up with, to come up with this. And I will say, and I I'll stand corrected, but almost every one of these are already working code, you know, in our in our building code now for a home. So we're not talking about somebody having to add a whole bunch to their house. They might have to add a a a fire extinguisher that they might not have, but other than that, most all of this is in their home already. So there was talk about this would ultimately or could ultimately impact budget, which is why whatever the permit fee is, we would want to cover that budget amount.
Okay, I guess my my overall.
Long-winded answer, but there was rationale behind.
Right. Let's let's maybe start with imposing the the regulations and and. Right, let's, let's maybe start with imposing the the regulations and and rules that address the problems we've seen without, without overreach. And this is, I see this kind of as an evolving ordinance where if new problems pop up in the future, we can come back and amend it, but to put all these things in the first ordinance seems like a little overreach. We've only had really one bad apple in the city, so I don't want to have, you know, 45 regulations and we need 25 more employees to go out there and force these things at a cost of, you know, a couple million dollars to the taxpayers. So that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, they just, and if I, I'll call on the Fire Marshal's Office to to respond to this, but if I remember correctly, the average inspection time for, you know, the homes that you inspect for the, the kids, and I want to, I want to say on average, once you get those inspections going, they're somewhere between 15 to 30 minutes on an inspection. So we're not talking about hours and hours and hours. And, and again, so just to put it in context, that's how all this was, was come up with.
Mayor, I got one question for Darren, I guess, or City Attorney. Once they come in for a B and B and say they do this, is their property at that time, show residential or commercial? Is it, is it a business or what?
It's still considered residential and that's based on a Texas Supreme Court case where it's been determined by the Texas Supreme Court that the rental of a property in a neighborhood for short-term rentals is still considered a residential use and it's not considered a business use.
All right. City Attorney, on the permitting, permitting safety inspections, I'm sorry, I want to address that section. I have probably no qualms under item number two. Under item number one, I think I kind of agree with number little. I think there's a possibility this creeps into the budget over time. Government loves to grow and, you know, that we may have to do 50 of these and I need somebody to go do that all of a sudden. I'm happy to do an initial inspection upon the initial permit being granted. And then I think on the renewal, maybe once every three or five years as opposed to annual. I don't know that anything is substantially changing year to year. Once the, if if they have to comply and they've got their working smoking detector and they've got their fire extinguisher present, I have a hard time seeing what's, what's changing 12 months from now. So that would be my comment is initial one to grant the permit and then a renewal period there as opposed to every year. We have a lot of important things that the Fire Marshal's Office needs to do. So I'd like to give them the time and the space to do that.
And I'm assuming that would probably be based on a property that we haven't had issues with after that permit.
I would agree.
And on that issue, back to Member Orlando's, you know, question about the repeat offender comment, we had, we had talked about, you know, if we've got somebody, three strikes and you're out or some, some number that you had these issues, no more permits and, you know, we're going to, yeah. Ultimately, do they continue to rent their home and all of that and become that guy? We'll see, right? So.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll say first off, being on this committee, wanted to extend a thank you to the other members of the committee. Obviously, putting in your time, energy and effort is always greatly appreciated. As you saw tonight, we have people that come here to give us their input and it's oftentimes difficult to kind of get that dialogue moving and do the follow-up and things. So having that opportunity to really sit with you on, on an issue like this and get that direct feedback as well as input from you is really great. I always try to learn something. I sit on other various boards and commissions and always walk away, I think, feeling more knowledgeable than I was before I went in. So I appreciate you participating in that. Trying to stay within the scope of the the first part of this, I'll say also that this was a really fascinating exercise for me because I think that this particular discussion is really illustrative of kind of the way that things go in in modern times. I mean, this, a lot of this stuff was unchanged for probably decades and decades and decades where we just had hotels and now we've got this new business that's kind of come up. So I don't want to get, I don't want to confuse maybe, I know Manny, you said that, you know, this is kind of leveling the playing field. For me, these are vastly different. It's kind of when, you know, I had a brick and mortar business and we had people come in with food trucks and I think there was some feedback about, well, you know, if they, we put food trucks out there, it's going to make it more difficult for the brick and mortars. And I was kind of like, well, you know, I mean, it's, the economy changes and we got to get out there and do our best to continue to to compete with the the changes that are occurring. And so, you know, I wanted to really focus and make sure that we're focused on Airbnb type properties or we keep referring to them as STRs up here and not really, you know, try to conflate the two. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's different in my eyes. And so I wanted to really try to approach it there. And I think that this was for me, a very fascinating experience being part of this, something kind of new, not just for us, but I think for the general economy and really focus in on what I think we had here, our safety of these whenever you're renting something like this. There's got to be like, Member Orlando pointed out, there's going to be at least some semblance of a baseline of what's expected for safety, the responsibility that these, or we, as I think a government set that that expectation of responsibility to the neighbors in that particular neighborhood. And then also the government revenue aspect. And I think for me, that was the biggest piece of this. This was all born out of the fact that, you know, these operators are expected to pay hot tax. And if there's any part of this, I think it would be leveling a playing field, it would be the collection of hot tax. So I wanted to make sure that was really kind of, at least for me, the foundation of this is ensuring that we know who these people are and then have an opportunity to collect the tax. So, you know, my, my biggest takeaway from this is really just the government revenue perspective of it. However, you know, a lot of this was built on other ordinances and kind of as we moved into this, I wanted to have maybe a workshop that we get emails pretty regularly. If you did an information request on STR, short-term rentals or Airbnb from, you know, stuff that was sent to us, we get things constantly from different groups and so forth that purport to be experts on this. And and I'm very thankful that we have the opportunity to kind of talk through this before we move into actually drafting an ordinance. A lot of this was built on other ordinances and I know Mr. Cozas spoke earlier has been really, I think, for me, very, very helpful in providing those example ordinances from other municipalities. And I would like to have an opportunity also to still see some of the outcomes or the practical applications of some of the components of this that we've put forward. And I've slowly kind of been trying to look into that myself, just because I think there are, it seems like there are some other concerns with council up here as far as the staff time and so forth that goes into this. I'd like to see what other municipalities are seeing once they actually implement these. And then I guess as just a clarification point, it was my understanding from us going through the first part of this where it talks about providing a sketch, that it really is, I think, the expectation and staff can give me more feedback on this, that it really, the expectation is a sketch and not necessarily a blueprint or having to go out and hire an architect or an AutoCAD guy to go and, you know, make an exact replica of your house floor plan, but rather just something that gives us an idea maybe of how many rooms there are, what the most appropriate way to exit the facility is in case of a fire or other emergency and just kind of general location, I think, of our extinguisher. It's not on the screen anymore, but I think that was the expectation is not to, like I said, have to go out and hire an architect, but rather just giving a general idea. So maybe that could provide some, you know, better color on that particular item. Somebody told me stop saying provide color, but you know, I can't think of another thing. Say, you put me up here and I'm speaking. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, good thing.
Yeah, I would just, I think what might be helpful, Darren, I think we've heard feedback from multiple members, just that there's, there's more, there's more comfort with some provisions than others as it pertains to like the explicitly, explicitly banning the use of a rental for partying and and providing the, I'm trying to see which part of it is up here, but the, providing the information in the door that explicitly says, you know, these are the rules. I think parking is another one, like, hey, you can't park in front of your neighbor's houses or we're going to, we're going to be really aggressive about that. So I, I would be interested and it sounds like maybe multiple other members would be interested in when this is presented in ordinance form of kind of having a little bit of an option there of saying like, here are some core activities that directly influence, directly influence neighbors such as, so let's call it like internal versus external facing. So externally, whether, I guess, parking on the street, whether or not you know that you can or can't have a party, kind of three strikes, you're out, that things that the mayor was referring to versus these other items that are less directly, rest, less directly targeted towards specifically abating nuisances. And that's everything from, I guess, the the fire inspection to the, to the 200-foot notification requirement. And so I guess just giving us a little bit of an option because I think we're all on the same page that we want to pass something here. I think we're just going to have a discussion as the mayor indicated about specifically what's the best way to do that and what's kind of core and then what's, what some of us find to be superfluous. And so I guess as that's brought forward, I think that discussion could be better facilitated and we could get this passed into law as soon as possible if we kind of had some options presented there, if that's good enough.
That, that's fair. I mean, I'm hearing some different opinions. Just for example, you take, I think there was a concern about having, or a suggestion that you could do an initial inspection and then for properties that seem to be compliant, not having to do it on an annual basis. But at the same time, there was also concern about having to provide a floor plan and giving that type of information. So one of the things you could take there is combine those two to some extent in that when you come in and do your inspection, I mean, have them put on an application how many bedrooms there are, that will be verified through the initial inspection. And then you can get that verification of the number of rooms that qualify, which can then determine the occupancy, which could then be, you know, put on the advertising and things that we've indicated on here. So there are different approaches we can take. Obviously, councils, you know, going to, going to weigh in on that and at least put us in the proper direction. So right now, what I'm, what I've heard so far is, correct me if I'm wrong, you, the council doesn't want it to be overreaching, you want it to be balanced, but you also want it to be targeted.
Right.
And what I'm hearing, at least from you, Councilmember Orlando, is that you would like it to be targeted. When I say targeted, not toward individuals, obviously, but you're targeted toward the behaviors that the council is trying to address.
Right. And to me, the the main one that we're trying to address is people feeling, you know, people being bothered in their own neighborhood, the rights of the people that bought a house are now being bothered in their neighborhood by a nuisance property. And so I really, another way I would kind of divide it, I think some of these things are meant to protect neighbors from being bothered by this. And I think some of these things kind of don't do so much to protect neighbors, but just in general make it more difficult, just raise the barriers to entry for people who might want to do this without necessarily having a big impact on the the neighbors. And so, I mean, that's kind of where I would draw the line. I think all of us up here might draw it slightly differently, but I guess I'm just saying, I think we can get to something as like, the first time this is read and presented, that we can pass and have very broad support for if we just have options between those two different flavors.
And I agree, but there, you know, there is a balance between coming in and seeking permission to do something that would not ordinarily be done in a residential area so that when you do that, you want to just balance that. And I, I agree, what you're, you're saying is you have to figure out what that balance is and we can figure that out throughout.
Yeah, and I, I think the point is, if, this is kind of what I'm saying. We had the Super Bowl here in 2017, you can go on Airbnb and still, you can see probably hundreds of houses in Airland where people were like, oh, this is something I could do and and make a little extra money for, you know, for, for this one weekend. I think we know that they're not going to do that if they have to pay the fee, go through this process, create a, a sketch of their house that's then part of the public record. And and I, that's fine, that might be the intention of some, but I, I don't know that that's the intention of everyone to just blanket discourage STRs that are operating in the right way. And so I guess that, that's what I'm kind of saying. The things that are, I, I think no matter what, even if you're going to just have the Super Bowl thing once, you should have to be a good neighbor and not have people park in front of your neighbor's house and not have parties at the house. But i- in terms of, I think there's other stuff that just broadly suppresses someone's ability to do an Airbnb. And and those are the things that I would kind of want to take a second look at or at least have the option to consider separately apart from the core things that are enforcing people that are doing wrong by their neighbors.
Mayor Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Darren, I know you went through the first component of it, the permitting requirements. Did you, did you have a plan to present the other component?
It, it's sort of just sort of, I think, council took it the direction that council wanted to and jumped into some of the other items. Safety inspections was one of those, as you can see here, that, gosh, can you, that's where we were. And I think that was in, the mayor elaborated on how that we, or at least the committee, reached to this point of using the, some of the recommendations from the Fire Marshal's Office. There is a guest notification sheet that would contain certain information that they would be required to have posted on the property. Next, beyond that, if you want to go ahead and scroll down, that was the specific regulations that council was interested in. Some of these are things that I think Councilman Orlando was, was referring to. So these are just some of the things, I'll go through these quickly. As you can see here, that no external signage, have occupancy limits, two persons per, and by the way, the, on the occupancy limits, it was not based upon the size of bedroom or anything. And it's really not, it's just how many bedrooms and that way you could come up with a, a number that can be determined on the maximum occupancy for that house. And so it's basically two per bedroom plus two adults with a maximum of 10 adults or 10 individuals at the property. Then you had parking limitations, one vehicle per bedroom or a maximum number that can be contained in a garage and driveway, whichever is less. Then we had advertising limitations, things that needed to be disclosed in the advertising so that the, anybody who comes in and rents a short-term rental would then have a clear direction on what their occupancy and parking limitations are in addition to having to disclose what some of the city's rules and regulations are, what's permissible, what's not permissible. And then finally, there were other restrictions, unlawful advertise without a permit, unlawful to rent without a permit, unlawful to operate without paying your hotel occupancy tax, unlawful to rent to a guest under the age of 21. And it goes on here, unlawful to use or allow the property as a party, entertainment venue or any commercial or other use, unlawful to park recreational vehicles, trailers, boats, et cetera, on the property. The one that probably generated the most discussion on this was the G, the notification of property owners. I know if, if members of council are probably looking for something less, you know, reaching, then this would obviously probably be something that would be up for discussion. And then finally, cannot be rented for less than 24 hours and, and then obviously, we said the filing of quarterly tax reports shall be required if a permit is active. This encourages people to pull their permits if they don't really have, because some people will have advertising and out there and then they haven't rented in forever. And so we want to make sure that it encourages people to come in and take down their advertising and also withdraw a permit if they're no longer going to be operating.
The, just real quick to provide, not necessarily clarification, but just on G, notification and issuance of a permit, city provide notice of all property owners. One, we had talked about, you know, the, the need for that and and really it's just to have, if, if you're here, basically the houses that touch you are aware that this house now has a permit for STRs. If you've got any issues, complaints, if something happens, here's who you contact, which is the property owner, and and just, you know, work out your issues amongst your neighbors as opposed to, you know, getting the city involved. That was really the, the intent behind it. You know, and, and we said, you know, we've got the, the software available that we can provide that notification or provide that, that notice, you know, rather than having, we had talked about having the actual SDR owner do it. And then it's like, okay, how do we know it's been done and all of that? So we said, well, you know, very much like our zoning cases, we can do that and use the same 200 foot. So the reason was to just put that contact information in the hands of the neighbors and if you've got an issue, call your neighbor, you know, don't necessarily reach out to us first, reach out to your neighbor. So I wanted to provide, provide some, some clarification on that. I'm certainly okay if it's not in there, it's just, that was the reason behind it.
Mayor Cam Carver, you had a question?
Yeah, I've got to run through my quick list of stuff and try to be brief because I know Member Perez probably has some great items.
It's all right, I'll wait.
Thank you. On the specific items, I think parking needs to be something that is clearly addressed. I heard the complaints about the access when the party is happening. And as somebody who works in land development, road access, ingress, egress is important, enjoyment of the property is important. I don't think the one vehicle per bedroom solves it for me, to be quite honest with you, but maybe it does, I don't know. But I, I think the ability to tow a vehicle needs to be in there somehow. needs to be in there somehow, some way, assuming that they're blocking ingress, egress, or they're parked in a place that is keeping a owner from leaving their their premise. I don't know what the the answer is there, but if they want to run this, the city has permitted them. And all of a sudden, it causes stress in my life or it causes me not to be able to leave or something of that effect. There needs to be the ability to remedy that. And that's just kind of where I'm at. And I'm throwing the idea out there. I'm not, I wish I had more detail on how that.
I'll, I'll tell you, in fairness, we wrestled with the parking component, didn't we? We wrestled with that. And because if if somebody is legally parked, whether it's inconveniencing somebody or not, if they're legally parked on a public street.
Agreed.
That's where we wrestled.
Absolutely. And and Mayor, where I'm at on it is, it can be on the public roadway, but if I can't get to work, I can't go pick up my mama, or I can't leave the premise because all of a sudden a party is there. What's gonna end up happening is a party's still gonna get thrown. We're just gonna throw the book at them and say, you can't do this. And then hopefully that will get adjudicated. But in the interim time before the next council meeting, when we can be yelled at appropriately, you know, there's not the ability to remedy that. And they're blocking my house on Saturday night and I'd like to go to dinner with my wife. And I could very easily see that being a problem. So that that's one of the items that if we're gonna go through all this brain damage, so to speak, there needs to be a reasonable remedy. The hotel owners understand they have to give a certain amount of parking for the number of doors. And on some level, I find that to be equitable. Item J on this list regarding the the STRs and the tax reports, I think that's an upon upon the request of the city item in my mind. In terms of, upon the request, are you paying your taxes? It's just, it's another way of regulatory impediment. And it becomes an administrative item. The city needs to know because they're a nuisance on request as opposed to a mandatory item. Something else that came up to me about, you brought up city attorney is, what happens if these guys roll off?
If they what?
If they, if they, if they get inactive or they roll off. I'm not opposed to seeing an activity that turns off your permit. You have to come reapply. I could very easily see that you don't do it for 24 months, you roll off. You're inactive, can no longer, as opposed to it sitting on the books forever. So I'm open to that concept. I'm trying to make this narrow ordinance that is strictly enforced as opposed to this broad thing that is forever. And I think for folks who, we go through all this brain damage, maybe that user is not great and then they don't use it. No, no, usually you start to process over, I probably want that inspection again, all that other stuff, yada, yada. On item G, I don't, we need to find a different way to notice. I just, that treads into other areas. And I'm not trying to scandalize the person that's using this. I'm not trying to create more activity here about this person. If we create a permit process and now we're gonna come and yell, why did you permit this guy next to me? There needs to be a more artful way to do this. My recommendation at this juncture is you put the physical notice when you want a P and Z notice of use. Is that correct? When you want his own change, there's a notice of the application. Is that correct, Mr. McDonald?
We put a, there's a posting on the site and then there's mailouts to the 200 feet and then the agenda.
I'm, I'm happy with the the posting on the site. This is inartful to me and I'm generally not comfortable with that.
Now, I ask for clarification, do you mean posting on the physical site? Like, are you talking about the CUP notice, like the?
Yeah, there's a sign that's that's placed on this property. It has to be 10 days before hearing, I think, that says we've applied for.
I'm, I'm happy with that. It can be three feet and big font, I'm good with that. I just mailing to the neighbors and everything else is troublesome. It's only gonna, it's only gonna exacerbate this problem, not make it better. And to member Orlando's point, we're not trying to, we're trying to target the bad actors. But if you're just using this and your mom and pop, mailing the neighbors is not, is an inartful way to achieve that, so.
I'm gonna respectfully disagree that putting the big sign is gonna be probably more cumbersome because the homeowner themselves is gonna go and have to have that sign made. You're talking 200-foot notice, you're notifying 10 people. That cost that the city would would do and it'd be part of the permit process would be whatever a stamp is, 55 cents plus, you know, the cost of generating the letter. Going and getting a single sign at any of the sign shops costs you 40 to 50 bucks. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, we're gonna respectfully disagree on that item. I'm just not gonna get there on that noticing. That's okay.
I'll disagree with both and say I don't think either is necessary.
I was gonna say, you know.
Play it on a website would be fine.
And, you know, when, whenever I do bring something back to council, another option is, you know, you can always have a a site on the, on the city's website or a link to the to the permit page to where people can go and identify where any permits have been issued for STRs in city. I mean, that's another option. I know that some cities do that and so.
I appreciate that. And I just wanted to piggyback on one thing that was said, just to kind of draw it. Like, we have this distinction and I think it's a real distinction that there's kind of two groups of people. There are some people that literally will go and like rent out a house that they will use for Airbnb and that that's like a legitimate, like, business. Like, they go and buy that, they're never gonna live there. I think in in the regulations on these, they'll call them like non-owner occupied buildings. Like, they literally don't live there at all. And they are doing this for a business purpose. And they probably, since they have people in them literally almost every day, they want to juice their occupancy in the same way that a hotel does. They're gonna have a ton of people there. Then there are these other people that are just maybe doing this casually. Maybe they have it up on Airbnb and they're like, oh, if somebody gives me the right price and maybe they end up doing it a few times a year. I think we're all kind of more sympathetic to that second set of people. I think we're all a little more skeptical of that first set. Like, that first set is kind of running a quasi-hotel out of, out of their neighborhood. But the, I think the effect of a lot of the kind of, if we say like the core regulations here and then the additional regulations, a lot of the effects of the additional regulations are gonna be, are going to make it so that only the people who are the professionalized actors, who are wanting to do this all the time, have the financial incentive and wherewithal and expertise to want to do this. We're gonna drive mom and pop out of this because they don't want to do a site plan. They're only doing this like three or four times a year. So they're not making enough to cover the permit fee. But the guy that rented out his house and he's doing that all the time and he's advertising it on the the party websites and everything, he's gonna go jump through all the hoops. And so that's kind of, since we made that distinction, I just want to draw that I think that's a potential concern. If we get too regulatory, we could actually be selecting for exactly the kind of people we don't want and screening out the people that might be doing this for the right reasons.
Member Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. One, as I have the opportunity, I want to thank all the members who served on the committee. It was about, I'd say roughly, we spent about 10 hours debating all this. None of the stuff that in here is arbitrary. It was all kind of discussed at length. A lot of what we're mentioning now was a lot of the discussion that we had. I would say that, I think the mayor and I would both say this does not perfectly reflect our ideas. It perfectly reflects the work of the committee, whose time, valuable time we borrowed to try and formulate something as a recommendation to us. My, my hope is that as a council, we respect the work of the committee, draft an ordinance in line with what the committee recommended. Maybe we have some debates about some provisions in here, but let's not rework it. Let's not rework it in its entirety. I'd say there's not, there's, I don't think I've had an issue that we've discussed that more perfectly and succinctly deals with one of the more difficult things we do as a council, which is how do you protect an individual's property rights while also protecting the rights of their neighbors? The joke I used to have is, when I worked on staff, is like the two complaints I'd get in the, in the apartment department is, how dare you not let me do whatever I want to on my property? Or how dare you let my neighbor do whatever they want to on their property? It's gonna be one of those two things. It's generally categorized, and that's, this is what this represents. There, look, there's a lot of ifs, thens, what ifs, this particular provision. These guys are a corporate entity, these guys are a mom and pop, these guys have two homes right next to it. There's just no way that we could solve all those problems at once. I think personally, this really represents a lot of good quality work. There may be some, some edges we need to snip, but I don't want to unweave what the committee did. I want us to be careful about that because there was a lot of thought, an awful lot of thought put into pretty much everything that was being recommended. My hope is that we draft an ordinance generally in in the realm, we ask staff to go ahead and draft an ordinance generally in the realm of the recommendations of the committee. Once we have something actionable here, maybe we can chip away or modify a couple of, a couple of the provisions through amendment and then allow it to progress. I think with as much discussions we've had here, that I personally, and I mean this as, with no disrespect, I've had a lot, a hard time tracking everything that was was stated. Let's just get to a baseline and then maybe, maybe when the ordinance is placed, then we could say, hey, I'd like to amend this provision, have that amendment go through or not go through. And then that way, we can, we can progress. That's just my opinion.
If I, if I may, I really want to address that. And I, I think this has been a really good conversation up here and a really respectful conversation. I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm, I'm just, I, I feel a sense and I'm just being, there's been some discussion in past meetings on many different issues of like people playing games. So let me not, let me tell you just how I feel from my heart. How I feel from my heart is that on two different issues here, there's a kind of a significant amount of bait and switch, which I feared and I attempted to articulate upfront. The biggest thing, though, is that when talking about the committee, there was some frustration by some members, including myself, to say, hey, we have a committee that adjudicates these policy questions, that committee is the city council. And the, the line was, this is just gonna be recommendations. We can, this is gonna come forward and council can can chop it and cut it and paste it the way it sees fit. And so I, to, 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 Member Perez, to your concerns or your comments there specifically, of course, I understand that's, that's your point of view. Certainly very much entitled to have that, I guess. My concern is just, I've seen a couple of committees now go through and I understand that there is this thought that, oh, because these people worked hard, there should be significant deference to them. And and I, I appreciate the hard work that goes into it. At the same time, I wanted to work on this committee and didn't get to be on this committee. So like, this is my opportunity to, to give input to that. And so while, and and my fear was in expressing, oh, we're going to have a committee that's appointed by one person, then there is gonna be this, this call, because I've heard the call before, hey, we have to do what the committee said and not go in and mess it up and tinker with it. That's the part I have a problem with then. If it's like, if we want to do a committee and then, okay, well, committees are fine because the council's gonna have the final say. But then if it comes to us and, well, but not really too much say because that's gonna disrespect the committee, well, then that would make me say, well, then I really don't ever want to have a committee again. If, if we're going to outsource the policymaking prerogative. And so that's just kind of the frustration that I'm genuinely feeling and genuinely putting out there. And I think it kind of dovetails with the other one about, hey, let's, let's pass this registration requirement, we're gonna do that. We're not gonna make anybody pay any money. That's not what this is about. We're not trying to make anybody pay money, we're gonna make them register and it's just so that we can have a lever to pull someone's permit if they don't register. And then it's like the first thing, like, well, yeah, well, we gotta recoup the city's costs, so let's make them pay. There are these discussions and then somebody says like, hey, I have this beef. And it's like, no, you're crazy, we're not gonna charge people money to do this. No, you're crazy, you're gonna have the ability to, think the phrase is, put your fingerprints all over this. And then when somebody wants to say like, hey, remember that conversation, there's a little bit of pushback. And so that's just where I'm coming from. And so I, I think, I would respectfully say that I would like the council to reserve the right to be able to make significant, if desired, additions to this with, to say nothing about the respect for the committee, because I, I think this certainly is thorough. I appreciate all the work, I appreciate it. And I don't think it's disrespectful if the council wants to continue to edit and continue to build on the committee's good work.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that. We wouldn't be having this discussion if we didn't want council's input. It wouldn't even be on the agenda.
And I'm only responding to the one comment made. As I said before, I think my conversation with you and your comments have been.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is why we're having this discussion tonight. I mean, this is to allow council to have dialogue and have input. And, and again, ultimately, direction to our city attorney with seven or eight people, you know, providing discussion, he's got to decipher from that what, where, and how to move forward. I also heard city attorney talking about on some of these, especially some of the more debatable issues that are in here, there's some options. There's some options that are, you know, less onerous, if you will, but yet still accomplish some of what's in here. So I, I, I think that's, I think that's a, that's a good thing. At the same time, there's probably been four council members that pretty much like what's here. And so that's direction to city attorney as well. So I, what I would expect, kind of hearing all the discussion, is that the bulk of what you see here, maybe not all of it, but the bulk of it is probably gonna be reduced to a, to a, to an ordinance. And then we're gonna have a couple of options on two to four of these main sticking points that we ultimately, you know, like I said, arm wrestle, I think that was the word I used earlier. We might, we might arm wrestle on two to four of these and we'll adopt an ordinance. So and at the end of the day, council had the final say. So, Mr. Kam Car.
One, real quick, and the other item I was stressing, I didn't stress about it, but I guess the other items were superior. Item number D, item number D, that sounds stupid. Item D, the age, I struggle that you can go buy a house, you can, you can go serve your country, but you can't rent an Airbnb in our city. I think that needs to better align with the practicality of what's going on in our country. You can go buy a pack of cigarettes, but you can't, you can't rent that. I'd like to get some kind of, there needs to be more artfulness and thoughtfulness on that.
Well, first of all, this, yeah, this obviously wasn't the ordinance. This was a recommendation and there, and there's a couple of cities that actually do have an age restriction there. I think those cities found what they were seeing is that you would have young people tend to, and it may have been in certain locations because of, those cities were more, had a more propensity for that type of behavior because of those cities. But, but anyway, that, that's sort of the, the origins of that. Obviously, I understand we can.
It's just a policy preference. You can go sign up to be in the US Army, but you can't rent an Airbnb, just don't align with me, so.
You can't rent a car either.
But I. Quick question, Darren. If this ordinance is made too restrictive, or have you seen any other cities ordinances be challenged in court?
The cities where you see these challenges are typically cities where you have a large concentration of short-term rentals. Because it may not be, you know, I think you even actually alluded to that at one point in time. You're gonna have to somebody with money to try to challenge that. And generally speaking, it's gonna be in a location where you see San Antonio, Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth. Those are the areas where you've seen challenges to certain provisions. So, but yes, it's any, any ordinance is always subject to challenge. What I was gonna say is sort of, and I'm not trying to shut things down here, but I was just gonna come back and circle around.
I was, I was about to come to you and ask if you've got pretty good direction.
As a matter, I just wrote the ordinance while y'all were talking and so it's done. And now, if y'all want to go ahead and talk about, no, no, no. No way to say, that was not, no, I was just joking that, that, yeah, yeah, it's gonna take a little while to obviously do this. So the, what we can do is we can, I can go ahead and take a stab at it. And I can, based on some of the comments I heard tonight, I was seeing some themes and try to come up with what I think are some, some core provisions that I think everybody was sort of on the same page on. And then on those areas where I felt like there was, where we weren't, in that draft, I can have different alternatives for that and we can knock that around. I suspect that we'll have another discussion. I don't plan on bringing this right back to council and saying, hey, let's do the first reading of this and that's when we debate it. I think we probably need to have an additional meeting like this to work through it before we would put it on for any kind of reading. If that's all right with council.
I would agree with that. I was going section by section. I want to address the last one quickly. Item number three, the appeal request, that needs to be spelled out, who's in that appeal? Item number three, the appeal request, that needs to be spelled out who's in that appeal, who's the hearing body on that? Is that the P and Z, that the city council, that needs to be enunciated. And then item number four, going back to strict enforcement, my preference is the lockout period be 12 months, not six months, assuming you, you get kicked out, bad boy stuff, strict enforcement, 12 months.
Deal. I don't see anybody else moving. All right. Thank you to the members of the public to bear with us through that. This has obviously been, when you write legislation, what do they say, it's sausage making, it's not pretty. But nonetheless, we had to go through this in order to give very good feedback to our council so we can write this ordinance. I want to thank our members of the, of the committee again. Thank you very much for the effort that you put in. Continue to stay engaged as we get the ordinance done. Hopefully sometime in January, we can have that and then we'll have more lively discussion about some of the components. But I think for the most part, what's here is, is, is very good and is probably going to be seen in this ordinance. And then, like I said, we'll see a few provisions change and some options. So thank you again for all that. Let's move on to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone stepped out, so Mayor Pro Tim, would you place it on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. Consideration and possible action. Resolution number R 2021-CUP 21-00033. This is, bringing this back up, it's postponed from the December 6 council meeting, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, quick staff report.
Yes, sir. Mayor Council, this is a request for a CUP for a liquor package store on Broadway, just near the south of the Chamber of Commerce and this existing strip center on the units there. As you anticipate, council did discuss this quite a bit, but at the last meeting on the merits and it's postponed and back here for you for consideration, nothing to add.
All right. Moving forward, excuse me, sorry, I just had a ringing in my ear, it was very loud. Moving forward, any questions, comments from council? Rowan's, sorry.
Yeah, I might as well start it out. The short answer is, mine is no. Within the three to five mile radius, you got, or within the five mile radius, you have five liquor stores. You have a total of 13 active liquor stores in Pearland. And as of this morning, we've got 150 permits sitting in a planning and zoning area for liquor stores. So I think, you know, how many do we need in Pearland? Isn't that right, Mr. McDonald?
No, we, we have, I believe right now we have 13 active permits for liquor stores, we have 150 TABC permits, roughly, approximately active in the city of Pearland. So that's, that's mostly it's going to be beer and wine, retail sales at grocery stores and convenience stores.
So it's just, you know, I guess you kind of look at it, how many do we need, you know, here? But that's up to everybody on council to make your own decision of what you say, but mine is no. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we, we beat this pretty well last time. I just wanted to make a motion to postpone it to today to make sure we had the opinion of the full council. I think there's a lot of, there's some discussion last time that we can revisit later on about, you know, due to some of the things that member Owens cited, do we want to get more targeted about where we can have liquor stores in the same way that we're doing with vape shops and some other places? But with the rules as they stand today, I'm going to be voting the same way as I did last week, and I think we just kind of wanted to get the opinion of the full council, so.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just, I think I indicated support last week. I've had several neighbors and citizens in that area that reached out and voiced their opposition, so I'm going to be a no vote on this.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't know how it's going to go, but I hope you join the chamber if you do move into Pearland.
Seeing no else, no one, no one else moving, we, oh, member Little, do you have any comments?
We specifically postponed it so she could hear your thoughts. Right.
So with that, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
She's not going to rent it out.
Can you re-tally the vote again for me?
It's three and three.
Merry Christmas, yes.
Motion carries four to three to adopt resolution number R 2021-CUP 21-00033.
You love a good twist.
There you go. Going backwards, Mr. Carbone, would you place number three on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 2000M-221, so moved.
A motion of second, this is a second and final staff report, quickly.
Thank you, this is, this is the second reading, this is just brought back because it was not unanimous last time, nothing to add.
Okay, any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Yeah, we're going a little fast. Can we rehash, what is this item again?
Sorry, this was the business, trying to go to the residential zoning district.
I was, I was a no on this one, I'm going to have to be no, no.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Step down.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
All right, moving forward, Mr. Kamkar, would you place number four on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2021-288, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's before you, it's required that the council adopt a letter of no objection. These are the new owners of residential development existing that has had these tax credits. The new owners are looking to invest significant amounts of money into the property for its long-term sustainability, viability, and they are looking to get this letter of no objection from the council so that they can extend the tax credits that would run with the term of their investment. They are looking, just to be clear, to expand and make all the units affordable. There was a small amount that had previously been market rate, but we've reviewed this and recommend your positive consideration of to file this letter, nothing to add.
All right. Questions, comments from council? Seeing none, oh, Carbone.
Just to highlight, the property is currently valued, what, at 4.3 million, and they're looking to put eight to nine million improvements. So I just hope the Missouri County appraisal district's listening to that and will get our tax base up.
Right?
I hope, I hope they join the chamber.
All right. Seeing no other comments, moving in that direction, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-288.
Member Little, if you would put number five on the table, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2021-282, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll cover both five and six together. The only reason these are not on consent, these are renewals of existing agreements the city has. You had asked us a couple of years ago to begin the process and talk about how the city previously provided service into the unincorporated areas, our future ETJs, at no cost, but that was not a policy sustainability question. And so when we shared that and went through a long process, it's been working well from our perspective whereby the city continues to provide top-flight emergency fire and EMS services into the unincorporated areas. But the city in return is reimbursed for a portion of those through the SD. They provide the maximum tax and then turn that over to the city. So representatives of other districts are here, but you know, with the first-time agreement, did spend a little bit of time in updating the language. And as was noted earlier, Mr. Hardy and the Fire Department have engaged with the SD boards, and that's all been going very well. So these two are before you for action tonight, nothing to add.
All right. Questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor. So I remember when this came before us initially, I had some comments regarding the fact that one of these ESDs in particular, I felt had an option on the table via their, the mud in that area to recover the entirety of the cost. And I still have heartburn that in this particular area, in this arrangement, that Pearland taxpayers are, to a degree, subsidizing the service for non-Pearland taxpayers. So I would like to just ask that staff reach out to our state rep on revisiting the ceiling that currently exists on the amount that we can collect for this in order to find some, some additional revenue for this, because it's my understanding we are still not made whole on this, and I would like to see what options are on the table. But I'll, I'll vote for it tonight to continue this because I want the service to continue, but for future discussion, that's what I would like, Mayor, thank you.
Deal. Questions, comments?
Out of curiosity, how far off are we from being made whole?
At the time, I believe, member Perez and I voted no, yeah, on this, and I think it was like 400 something, maybe.
So I voted no on five because there was a, in my opinion, a political decision outside of this chamber to split them as opposed to one having one ESD. But now it is what it is. I think, if I remember correctly, and Vance may know off the top of his head, but I think there was about $100,000, $200,000 discrepancy in what we project is the cost of service and what they could provide back to us with the 10 cent cap.
And that was in one, but I think for both of them collectively, it was close to a million, if not more than a million. So I would just, again, I just want to see whatever options. I know we probably don't have the numbers in front of you tonight, I don't want to put you in that situation, but for sure, we want to revisit this for future discussion if there's some way that we can dialogue with the state to look at the current ESD cap. I'd appreciate that.
I know Ned Thompson's doing a fundraiser, talk to him then.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-282.
Member Perez, put six on the table, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2021-283, so moved.
Motion of second, we just covered that under the staff report. Any other questions or comments? I see member Orlando stepped out for a second. Seeing no one moving in that direction, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-283.
All right. Member Owens, you'll place number seven on the table, I appreciate it.
Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2021-281, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
Please bring this forward. This is investment in our existing infrastructure, chiefly our water storage. We went through a process where we evaluated all of those storage units and then prioritized those, then took those recommendations and put them out to bid. We got a tremendous response to the solicitation, which is great in this contracting environment. Came out and the recommendations go with Gulf states, we're going to be able to take two of the units, Liberty and McLean, right next door here, and get those rehabbed and refurbished and bring them back online as part of our water system. Nothing to add.
Any other, that completes staff report, so questions, comments from council?
What is the exterior going to look like after the rehab?
Counsel, McCamcar, thank you very much for the question. We will have it painted, a standard color, we'll be looking probably in that tan region, but we're also working with our communications department to have our logo up on top, whether maybe our newer style logo that we're going for the branding of the water department, but that is all in working with communications to what we'll put up there.
That's more I'm alluding to, I'm just curious where that was.
That'll be on the aerial tanks, please, those are the elevated storage tanks.
Got it.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-281.
All right, moving forward, we'll come back to member Carbone, item number eight, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, second reading of ordinance 1605-2.
Second.
Motion of second, staff report.
This is our budget carryover item, and we went over it quite a bit last time, so we'll just stand by for questions, but otherwise ready for your consideration, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt the second reading of ordinance number 1605-2.
And Mayor Pro Tim, item number nine, please.
Yes, sir. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2021-200, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
City has quite a bit of forestry in our care, trees, and that this contract is, was a function of the budget amendment that you just approved, that's why it's, you see it here, but went out through a bidding process and this gets a contractor on board that we can work alongside and remove any hazards and keep the maintenance ongoing on our tree camping.
It's also why it was not on consent, so. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-200.
All right, moving forward, matters, excuse me, matters removed from consent agenda, there were none, other business, there was none. Mayor Council issues for city council discussion, there was none, and we'll move towards adjournment at 6:35 PM. With that, we need to go back into our executive session, so Josh, do we need to, just do it? You're good? Okay. So let me get my right agenda in front of me.
Reconvene, yeah, just to reconvene.
So we're going to call our special meeting that we started at 4:30 back into session at 8:35 PM, and with that, we will convene in executive session under section 551.074, personnel matters, boards and commissions, section 551.087, economic development negotiations, sections 551.071, consultation with the city attorney, and section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property. We will recess into exec session at 8:36. We will recess into exec session at eight thirty six.
All right, we are reconvening from our executive session at 9:24 PM. Let's see, item number one, section 551.074, personnel matters regarding interviews for the boards and commissions, council will take no action. Item number two, section 551.087, economic development negotiations, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. Darren, do you have a potential motion there?
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion authorizing the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to enter into an incentive agreement with prospect number 2110 as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. We've discussed this. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, action item number three, section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding pending litigation.
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the hiring of legal counsel for pending litigation as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion, did I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
And the last one, number four, section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property, consultation with city attorney regarding the sale and/or exchange of real property. Darren, do you have a?
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the sale of real property as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to adjournment at 9:27 PM of this special meeting that started at 4:30.
Four eleven.
All right. Some.
Oh, yeah.
January nine being in the bank.
All their money in.
At least two to three deals every day about contributing.
And.